Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen in for December 12th to order at 6:30. And first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda?
Okay.
Please. All right. I'd like to amend the agenda in a couple of ways. First motion, I'd like to amend item four to separate Conservation and Wetlands and the Library Board from the discussion on economic development. I think that there is some rethinking we need to do about economic development in general. And before we rush to put new people on, I'd like the Selectmen to get a little more involved in the shaping of that. So my motion there is, my motion is to separate item four and the appointments into two blocks of discussion. Conservation, Inland Wetlands Commission, and Library Board of Trustees, the movement on them, and then secondarily Economic Development Commission for additional discussion.
So, okay. We'll wait till it comes to that time. Okay.
All right. A second motion, I'd like to adjust the agenda to include discussion of the Malardo report with reference to the content on the WCPA licensing and the class designation, as well as some of the content regarding staffing as it relates to the selectman assistant role that will be being filled. Do we need a motion? That is the motion.
So we do, we have the motion, and then we need a second and approve. But I would like to, well, I don't want to second it. Or we can second and then discuss.
Yeah, we can second.
I think that is a standalone, like we had talked earlier. Maybe put it in a special meeting, because I think it's a very involved subject.
I think it is. I'm fine with that if we have it in short order. Not in January, but soon.
Well, we spoke before the meeting that we'd probably meet next week.
Next week?
To talk about ARPA and about the salary.
The additional, excellent piece, extra piece is the WCPA licensing. I think that's, you can discuss it in a special meeting, but I think it's an important enough issue that we get some work started on it to understand what is the correct licensing designation, et cetera. You want to lump that in the one discussion of the Malardo report?
Probably.
Okay. And then the third thing, I guess it's fourth, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a discussion of speed and safety issues. I do know that we all received two letters from Mike Donello this week, one from Officer Krause, about some issues on Main Street. But there are additional speed and safety issues that I learned during my door-knocking campaign on Rattling Valley Road, Union, West Elm Street, and Spring Street. And I would like us to at least have a discussion about what's going on, rather than just have random emails without full responses. It's not a criticism, it's an approach I'd recommend we take. So I would, my movement then is to amend the meeting agenda today to include a discussion of speed and safety issues in town.
I don't remember getting a second on the WPCA licensing and selectman assistant salary. If you're going to second it and then discuss.
We're not. We're going to move it to the special meeting that's going to be set for next week.
Correct. So there was no movement on it?
I move that we have a discussion on the Malardo report and with the licensing and the salary discussion at a special meeting for next week, time to be set after today's meeting.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're adding?
Yes.
So we're adding the speed and safety discussion tonight also after six? Is that what you want to do? Catherine?
Yes. I have a motion. Someone needs a second, we need approval.
Okay.
I don't mind adding it. I don't really have notes to talk on it in a complete way tonight.
That's fine, as long as we can get the discussion.
Because all my DOT contact information and stuff is in my office, so we can touch on it and then probably table for additional.
Dig further into it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And then I would like to add.
Do you want a second?
A second, yep. All in favor?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me.
And then I would like to add, after that, probably seven or eight, I'd like to add the resolution for the Board of Selectmen, talking about the grant we have for the town parks, for the playground that we passed before, but it was never signed, so I'd like to add that onto the agenda also.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. So getting back to number two on the agenda, approved minutes from regular meeting held on November 28, 2023. I have a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from November 28, 2023.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have audience of citizens. Any business come before the board, and we just remind you to state your name, and then we are trying to have a time limit to move the meeting along, so.
We are on board.
Okay.
I didn't get to hold what you wanted.
Just state your name, and then we just ask you to keep your comments to maybe three minutes or so.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, this is my first year here, and I just wanted to be, see how everything is run here in the town, and maybe learn something. And that's about it right there.
Welcome. Jane?
Jane Cadenot, Essex Street. I just wanted to say how personally disappointed I am that the hard work for that proposal last year initiative to reduce the waste was not passed. We still don't have a waste problem. And I'm asking the Selectmen to continue to kind of work on this and see what kind of solution we could come up that is acceptable to the town residents. But my real concern is, I don't want to see the food waste program, the food scrap program flee. And I read the minutes of the last study group, or I guess the ad hoc, and they said if we don't pass this, there's no money in the current budget to support the food waste. I don't know if that's correct or not, but it's what I read. And so I really would like to see us do whatever we can to keep that, that go funded. Because I think it does keep waste, out of the waste stream, but also I think it's an excellent program, so I'd like to see that go on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nicholas Olson. You know, I know that this is the new, the new power here, and I wanted to touch the topic of some of the roadwork. In the Deep River News that went out in the fall, it mentioned that, you know, there's all this roadwork going on, and, you know, set for late fall, and, you know, possibly early spring. And, you know, none of that work, from what I've seen, there's been a legitimate RFP that has gone out for what, you know, what needs to be repaved. They, you know, they listed Raleigh Valley, you know, under the road, and all these sorts, you know, all over town, but, you know, there's been no specifics put out online. You know, when you do an RFP, you know, you have quantified measurements, square footage, length, width, you know, what type of roadwork you're doing. And, you know, from going on the internet all year and looking at everything, none of that has happened. And I think it's good. It, you know, ensures, you know, quality work of what's specified and at the best value of the town, you know, for the expenditure of tax money to move forward on the projects. And I think it's important to look into that. You know, the asphalt plants have closed this year, so, you know, I don't think any of this would happen until the spring. But I think, you know, the road program really needs to be re-identified and addressed and how to do things appropriately. You know, a lot of the roads they did last year, you know, they don't really do the drainage, and that's kind of the bones of the road before you pave. And I think, you know, it's, it's stuff that should be re-adressed in the spring.
Renee LaMark here. Any discussion of traffic safety? I'd like to add Warsaw Street and Rube. I'm a resident of Warsaw Street and been there for almost 30 years, and the speed and the volume of the traffic just since COVID, and I don't know why it changed it, but it, the traffic is better and going faster. And so I, as a retired police officer, I think any review of traffic safety needs to be a two-pronged approach through DOT and looking at the flow of traffic, and also through the Connecticut State Police and looking at enforcement.
Real quick to add to that, there's an ice patch in front of the town dump, and it's a state road, it's their problem, but it was bad this morning, a spot salted, you know, but there's a problem, and there was a car that went into the embankment this morning. I don't know if everybody's seen it. But, you know, they keep saying up there, or at least Angus was saying, you know, he says something and they don't do anything, and it's really bad in that corner. There's been a lot of accidents because of that other spot. So something to keep bringing to their attention if you could.
I would also like to add Essex Street, the lower portion, people's speed.
Everywhere.
River roads. It's really, it's hard to walk on those.
I'm Joan Fuvall from 66 High Street. I'm also the chairman of the Municipal Ethics Committee. We have a small dilemma with the Ethics Committee, and I was told that the Board of Selectmen could rectify that. When we voted in November, there were three slots available for regular members to the, to the Board, and unfortunately, there were only two people running. They both got in, but we had, we had an empty seat in the regular Board. John Green ran as an alternate because he did not know that Carrie Jansen, who was one of our members, late pulled out of the election. We, in our bylaws, we don't have anything that restricts us from changing that and taking John Green as an alternate and making him a regular member, which we did vote on in our last meeting. I was told that we're not supposed to do that. There's no precedent, because we're a brand-new board, but that the Selectmen could approve us changing John from an alternate. We need to have five regular members. And I would like the Board of Selectmen to approve his change from an alternate to a regular member of the Board, so we have five members of the Board, and then we can look for an alternate, which I think would be easier than trying to find, having a special election to, to have a, a regular member on the Municipal Ethics Committee. So if that could be addressed either at this meeting or at your next meeting, I'm not sure how we do that, but I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
I have no problem making a motion to make John a full-term person. He's served on there already. Just my, you know, my thoughts, he's served on it already.
He hasn't missed a meeting.
And, you know, not because he's standing here filming us, but, no, I, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to make John a full-term.
All right. Our second motion.
I don't believe we can do that during an audience of citizens.
It's not on the agenda.
Because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, you could, you could, you could move it to add it to the agenda and then make the motion. So you have to add it to the agenda and then make the motion.
So can I make a motion to add the Ethics Commission discussion to our agenda?
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I, I said aye.
No.
Thank you, John.
Now we're doing a aye?
Thank you.
Okay. So now I'd like to make a, is there any more discussion for John Green? I'll make a motion to appoint John Green to fill the spot on the Ethics, no longer an alternate.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other audience, citizens? Okay. So moving into number four, the appointments, we're going to hand on Conservation and Inland Wetlands and Library Board of Trustees. At the last meeting, we had Jackie Nash come and present a resume, spoke to the group. And tonight, I know, we have Jacob Ricker with us. Jacob, would you like to address the group at all? I know you sent a nice letter in.
Sure. Should I stand or? Okay. So my name's Jacob Ricker. I've lived in town for, I mean, about two and a half, three years now. Very passionate about the town, but also, whereas the environment's concerned, very passionate. I got a bachelor's at UConn Horticulture, master's in Plant Science. I worked at Acer Gardens for two years. Pretty involved in town as much as I can be to become the first branching out to actually volunteering, so looking forward to that if that's a possibility. So, yeah. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for stepping up.
I had the opportunity to speak with Jacob earlier today, and I have a very good conversation with him, and I have no problem moving him forward.
Awesome. And Tony Pollock, the head of the, he also sent me a little text saying that he's in favor of having you appointed, so.
I was not able to speak with Jacob, but I was able to speak with two other people who spoke very highly of Jacob, and I'm comfortable with him for Jacob, great.
So let's take these two together, then. Can I have a motion to appoint Jacob to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire 2026, and also Jacqueline Nash to fill a vacancy until the end of term 2025 for the Library Board of Trustees?
I move that we appoint Jacob Ricker to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire 2026, and that we appoint Jacqueline M. Nash to the Library Board of Trustees to fill a vacancy until the end of the term in 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So for B, if you will, for our agenda, talking about Economic Development Commission, we have two people that would like to volunteer to be on that Board, Allison Sloan, who sent a letter in, and Renee LaMark, who also sent a letter in, and Renee is in attendance tonight. So what, I'll make a motion to, well, let's make the motion so we can have a discussion, right? So I make a motion to appoint Allison and Renee.
I'll second it.
Okay. And now discussion.
All right. Thank you. The reason I asked to separate it out is, we have not been able to have a special meeting yet to talk about our priorities. And I know that one of my key priorities, and I believe maybe both of yours as well, but we haven't had that discussion yet, is economic development. I was concerned at the end of the last term and wrote a letter to the Board at that time asking that they not reappoint, just immediately reappoint the people to the Board of Economic Development. I feel that that Board has been struggling. They, the, the last official study is, oh, let me, in 2005. There's another study, it's been well over a year, it hasn't been published, there's been tremendous turnover on the Board. I'm wondering if we might want to engage with them more fully in a way, understand their priorities, strategies more, what they need in terms of Board members, what experience they need to actually get a strategic plan for economic development together and move it forward. I did have the opportunity to have a conversation with Renee today. I haven't spoken yet with Allison, although there's a call-out on that. I think they're both terrific people and should be commended for stepping up to volunteer in an area that's really important to our town. I just think, before we put new people on the Board, we, we should, as a Board, have a conversation with the Chair and understand what he's trying to do and what sort of talent he's looking for to fill this, these slots. That's why I applaud this before we rubber-stamped it.
I feel a little bit different. I understand about us meeting and meeting with the Economic Development, but right now we have two very qualified, dedicated people that want to step up and help our town out on a very important Board. I feel that if we just meet with the Board that's there now and leave these people out, it's not fair to them, because they may bring a lot of insight to the Board that we don't know. I had a very good conversation with both Allison and Renee today also, and I feel very comfortable with the both of them. And maybe they could mesh in well with the current people that we have on the Board. I don't know, I don't know, that's them, you know, I know a few of them, but they've changed over, we've had such a turnover on that Board. You know, I don't have to put Jake on the spot, but Jacob's significant other, she was on there, and she was very good, Jill was very good, and she brought a lot to the table, but we need to bring more people back to the table that I feel can help our community out, move it forward. By prolonging it, sometimes people may say, you know, I don't want to be involved in it then. And that's not what we, that's not what I want. I want people to be involved. Again, we're on, this community is always as strong as the people that volunteer, and, you know.
With that understanding, Dwayne, with all due respect and with not particularly critical judgment of the folks who've served on the Board in the past, there has been spotty scheduling of meetings, spotty minutes of meetings, spotty reports. I'm not asking for delaying for, for many months, a two-week time. It's, we've been on, in our roles as elected officials for three weeks. I, I've immediately asked for a special meeting to talk about our priorities. This is one of them. I really feel that this is a Board that has been struggling, and before we put new people on it, I strongly suggest that we talk with the current Chair of the Board and get an understanding of what they're trying to do, and hear specifically what skills they're looking for. Respectfully, I submit, I did, I did hear what you said.
It goes both, it goes both ways. It's just that, you know, I, I like people that step forward and want to get involved in it and help out, and I, I don't, you know, but we've lost a lot of good people on this Board.
Two weeks. That's all I'm asking.
All right. Well, my part of that discussion would be, I concur more with Dwayne, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I think putting two people full of energy on board that is struggling, that doesn't mean we then don't take your approach and meet with the chairperson, say, we just got you these two dynamos, let's, let's, you know, and if you want to be the contact person to meet with the chairperson and say, we're giving you these two great people. What is the direction going?
With all due respect, I think it's broader than just me reaching out. I have attended a meeting. I think.
Well, if you want to be the point person.
With all of our Boards, there needs to be some back and forth and more communication with the Selectmen. I had suggested that we maybe have quarterly meetings, have quarterly presentations from the Boards to us, so that things don't drift.
What do you, what do you think you're going to accomplish in two weeks if we hold up the appointment of these two people?
I think we'd have a conversation with the Chair and get a sense of, of what his direction is, get a commitment that there will be a perhaps re-energization, if that's a word, for more structure, strategy development minutes, et cetera. That is a group that has been drifting for a long time. I respectfully say that.
Do we know if they have a meeting scheduled from now until our next meeting in two weeks?
I don't believe they do.
I'm just, just curious that.
That's why I don't think the two weeks is going to do anything. So the motion is still to appoint? Any more discussion?
I don't have any more.
So do we move forward with the appointment?
You've made the motion, right?
You've made the motion.
I, I have no problem moving them forward with the understanding like we had two weeks ago, that we, that we set up a meeting with, with the three of us and, and the chairperson.
Okay.
Catherine, I mean, I mean, we, we had this similar two weeks ago, and we have to have a meeting with, with the people. But I have no problem moving both these ladies forward. They're, they've got a lot of energy and a lot of spunk in a nice way.
Yeah.
To help out this Board.
Great. All right. My second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, Steve? So next on the agenda, discussion regarding job openings, change of personnel. I just wanted to report the parking rec position. We have some great resumes coming in, they're going to start interviewing maybe early January. I don't think with the holiday, they're going to get a lot done next week. Excuse me. Wetlands Enforcement, we're still waiting on a good job description for that. Transfer station attendees, we have a couple applications that have come in, which is great. The Selectmen's Assistant position will be open starting December 22nd. Our Assistant Joyce is stepping down, so we want to thank Joyce for all her years of service. And you've got to put that in the mentions. So that'll be a big, a big loss for us. The Social Services, they had approved some ARPA money a few years ago, or last year, I guess it was, not a few years, excuse me, to hire a part-time assistant for the Social Service Director. So the Community Health Committee right now is really actively coming up with a job description, and we'll be posting that shortly. And that was my, basically, job discussion opening, that was, that number, I mean, that was the end of that discussion.
I'd like to discuss that a little if we may.
Sure.
As we're looking at the Selectman Assistant, can you clarify for us the positions that are entailed there? I believe we have Selectman Assistant and then the Assistant to the Assistant. Is it just those two working on assistant roles? Are there additional spots doing that function? Are there other part-time people doing that function as of those two roles?
Those two people. Joyce's position is a full-time. The Assistant to the Selectman, excuse me, that other position is a part-time position.
I know we're going to meet on the Malardo Report and all of that. That being said, are, do you plan to rewrite the description for the job, or is it going to stay the same? What, how do you plan to replace this?
Well, since we're talking about the salary description next week, it's kind of difficult to answer what you're asking. At this point, I would probably use the job description that was posted when Joyce first took the job, which is a step backwards, because Joyce has taken on a lot more responsibility. But again, if we're meeting next week, that would be definitely something that we could discuss, the job description at that time.
Sounds good.
But I, I can't really cite all the, Joyce does a million and one things, so I cannot just rattle them off, but, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Number six, update and discussion of the transfer station. So, I took a lot of notes, and first thing, at the town meeting last night, the unit lease pricing, or pay-as-you-go, if you weren't at the meeting or didn't see it on the, on the website today, did not pass by a vote of some 290 to 94, or something like that. I think that was the number. I know I speak for the other Selectmen to say we were very impressed with the turnout, so everybody watching, thank you so much for coming. Democracy at its finest right there, town meeting. The place was packed. I have never seen that many people at a town meeting, and I've lived here 30 years and probably haven't missed more than a handful of town meetings, so, so kudos to everyone that came out. We wanted to give a shout-out and a big thank you to the Waste Reduction Ad-Hoc Committee, and I wanted to name some names for the record, and if I forget anyone, Lenore is here, so you can remind me. Chairperson Lenore Grunco, committee members Nancy McGee, Ron Larson, Carmilla Balducci, Kathy David, Marion Stay, Dorothy DeMichael. Did I forget anyone?
I think that's her.
Okay. So we really appreciate, you did an outstanding job researching the options, and what you brought forward to the town, you thought was the best option for the town. So we really thank you. I'm currently researching what we need to do to make a permanent Waste Reduction Transfer Station Committee, and I'm hoping we can do this at the next Board of Selectmen meeting. Talked to the town clerk, and I have a meeting with the town attorney, just to make sure we are, we, you know, phrase that correctly and put it together correctly and vote on it correctly, that sort of thing.
If anything, I would like to make a comment. If anything came out of last night, there is a silver lining. You know, it, it brought awareness to recycling, whether it passed last night for pay-as-you-go or recycle. And I think that having this committee going forward.
And I think that having this committee going forward, I think is very important to our community. Because maybe this committee can continue doing the hard work that they've done, and Lenora, thank you with your team, but it'll continue educating people on the importance of recycling. If people step up and just recycle a little at a time, change is tough, but a little at a time, will reduce our, our tonnage. And we reduce our tonnage, it reduces our payments out. It reduces our payments out, it saves us money. So again, it's, I try to look at a silver lining from last night. And again, there was a lot of people there, it was good comments, but again, I want to continue moving this forward, and, and let's find a way as a community to try to reduce our, our waste, you know, and without charging people the bags.
Yeah.
And if we have a, if Lenora and her team has a quarterly meeting that we can address people on more about recycling, you know, that's important. And again, it's very important to the town here, because Catherine, you're new to it, but you know, you'll see the checks, we sign the checks every month for the, for Mira. I mean, someone will get my model, and it's, you know, if we can save whatever, as Jane said, keep the food scraps going, if we can keep that going too, and find a way to save money there, it's very important. That's just my, my two cents on, on that.
May I ask, I have some confusion. Is there a second committee working on transfer station and other reduction activities? Or is this been the only committee?
The only committee that I know of.
This is it?
Yeah.
There's not another one operating?
I don't know.
Okay. Some of the feedback I got from yesterday, and that, that was a very exciting and engaging And the team did terrific work, and I'm only sorry that, I understand the temperament of that evening and how, how it progressed, but I really wished we could have heard more from Waste Zero. And, and I heard from many people, they wanted to hear more, and it was a little bit hard on getting all that, but the emotions were going and the meeting moved, and that's how it went. And I understand how the committee, committee was formed, and then the committee members picked a town that worked best for them, but I did have several calls before yesterday's meeting and then today, in the recap of the meeting, saying that they would prefer to have a meeting where more people could engage in times that weren't for, you know, sold retirees, or people have more flexibility in their schedule. So that's something to consider as we appoint this. And there was also a request, not taking anything away from the really solid, deep, lengthy, detailed work that this team did, but there was some suggestion that additional skills may be needed as we move forward with the committee, maybe getting some people engaged who have engineering backgrounds or more business backgrounds and can take a more holistic look at the transfer station. So I add that for discussion when we get to the point of moving forward on, on either revamping or re-deciding on, on what to do with this committee. To clarify one other point, is, is this ad hoc committee now done as, in its current form as we came to this vote yesterday? Is it, is it done?
That decide, that is up to the Board of Selectmen. An ad hoc committee is a temporary thing with a certain mission, and once the mission is achieved. I know Lenora would like to have a wrap-up meeting with her group, and then at that point, if we have a new committee formed, we can discuss the appointments to the new committee. Perhaps Lenora will step back up and grace us with her energy and dedication. Perhaps not, maybe she's done. But, so at that time, we can try to recruit people with different backgrounds.
But I feel that we have to keep some sort of committee going forward. There is some momentum out there, and again, we have to educate the residents, you know, the responsibility of recycling.
Absolutely. So some of the takeaways to add to what Catherine said is the, you know, the enforcement at the transfer station, and maybe we need to look into the upgrades to the transfer station to include some sort of attendance booth and ease of enforcement, you know. I saw a design of the transfer station where when you drive in, the bulky waste and everything was moved to the left. So that would prevent people from going down below at all. So maybe that's the way, if we can kind of concentrate everything, and then with our attendant, you know, if we can, we'd have to reconfigure the, the drive-in or something, because if you put that gate there, like we talked about, or the little booth, then you have backup maybe on Route 80, so that's not. So there, there's going to have to be some money spent, some time put in to reconfigure, but to address a lot of the concerns brought up last night, which was the enforcement issue. So we'll have to, you know, and I, I would like to pursue continuing the food scrap program as well, so I think, right now, I'm not sure, and Lenora probably has the numbers, and she happens to be here, but, so my notes say here, you know, a lot of it was subsidized by the pilot program, grant money received from the state, which ends February 1st, 2024. So at this point, I don't know what we'd be looking for in the next year's budget if we want to keep that going. Do you remember exactly what was subsidized with the food scraps?
I don't, but the numbers, 15,000, 18,000 comes to mind. I basically not dealt with numbers, I just basically saw Waste Zero taking that role.
Right. So, so once the pilot program ends, then those, those costs would come back to the town.
If you look at, if you look at the numbers that they presented us, it was going to cost us $18,000 next year to truck the food scraps to Southern.
Yeah.
So if you take 18,000 divided by 12 months, that's $1,500 a month. Divide that up by tonnage, we have to generate about 11 ton of food scraps a month to break even. That's my rough math. That's what, that's just my, to keep it going and to, if those, if those numbers were real that they gave us, the 18,000, that's what we could do. Again, I don't know if the numbers are in stone, but that's, those questions that I've been asking since day one are those hard numbers.
May I say one thing about that? Now that we're doing all four slash five schools, we're doing food scraps, I plan on going back to Blue Earth, say, you know, try to ding them down, you know.
So, so more we can beat them down, the more that, A, we don't have to generate as many ton, or B, it's, gives us more money back in our coffers. That's how I'm looking at to keep it going, excuse me, without charging the residents the bag fee.
Absolutely.
Or keep, keep the scraps going, and I, again, if the numbers are real, and Blue Earth will negotiate those numbers down lower, that'll only help us more. Just my thoughts.
Well, really pull tonnage out of our solid waste that we're all concerned about.
We're paying, we're paying $116 a ton right now, and it's gone up to 122. So if you get 10 ton, it's $11,000.
Yeah.
Or $1,100.
So we might be able to, yeah.
There was something that came up last night, a couple people mentioned about the contractors coming in and illegally using the dump. Without changing the gating factor, would it be prudent to take a look at the actual job descriptions of the current staff there, and what's required of them, and to have additional supervision of them in reporting back, governance, oversight, et cetera, to, between now and any continuing committee and any further plans, take a look at what can be done actively now to have tighter control of the contractors coming into the dump?
I think we have, I think we have a two-pronged question here, because my understanding is the contracts that we're talking about, the contracts that are bringing in bulky waste, demolition, debris, brush and that. I don't believe that we have any contractors that are bringing in garbage.
No, private haulers are not allowed.
Are not allowed.
And they do for that.
According to the, well, current, current, current ordinance does not allow private haulers. So I think the comments made were about.
More for the bulky.
Private contractors or deep river contractors that are, yeah, bulky waste.
Bring in the, the demolition, they're working on someone's house.
Do you have a problem with it, though?
Well, I, I, I have a problem with, yeah. I mean, I don't want anyone bringing anyone else's garbage into our town, but it's.
Yeah, they have these guys come home using their sticker.
Right.
And then going to the dump.
But that's, that's, that savings there isn't going to help us on the, the garbage that's going to Ohio or Pennsylvania.
Agreed, totally.
That's the, that's the money that we're paying, $116, going up to $122 next year. That's where the important part is. Yes, not that the demo is important, but that's going on Essex or something.
I do think that some of the reaction and energy, negative energy around this was, is there's a feeling that we're not appropriately managing the current dump operations right now.
Well, that's true. That's what I said. One of my takeaways was the big issue, enforcement at the transfer station. Everyone said it. So, exactly.
So is there anything that we can do in terms of oversight now, before changing where the gauge is or anything else like that? Is there any immediate action?
I want to make a recommendation that we should probably spend some money for our town constables and have them up there supporting the gentleman that are working up there. People act differently when there's a law enforcement there. Let's go back seven, eight, 10 years ago, when our, our past predecessor, Dick Smith, was there. Dick would sit up there on Sundays with the police crews and running marker plates, and say, goodbye, goodbye, we, we don't have that option right now. But if we had one of our constables sitting up there, it'd only have to do it a couple weeks, and people could realize, oh, I can't go to Deep River anymore. It may cost us a little money to push these people back to Chester, or Essex, or Killinworth, or Westbrook, or wherever they're coming from.
I think that's an interesting approach. I would encourage us, and I still ask my question, is there anything the current staff can do now without spending more money to get on top of this problem?
Well, they can enforce the rules that are already on the books.
So what does it take to get them to do it?
Well, I think sometimes they're pulled away, you know, if there's, when you go up on a Sunday, there's cars parked, you know, maybe we need to put cones up, make lanes, there's cars parked everywhere. And then if they're helping somebody, somebody can be driving by the cones, going down below or coming down and going in the back, and, so there are some things we could do, put cones up so they can't go in the back of the comp, the compactor, shut that road down, like a gate or something, or just a sawhorse. And I think it's, you know, maybe we don't have transfer station stickers given out up there, because I think if you have one of our, our guys going into the transfer station office to give out a sticker, then somebody can be driving in without proper credentials and get away with it, because then there's no, no eyes on the vehicle. So I don't, I, you know, it's, it's a tricky situation. I think our guys are doing a great job, but they, they do miss people, or people are in their cousin's car, and they're not really from here, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of nuance here that, you know.
Past couple weeks, there's been some confrontations up there that were putting our employees in harm's way. At the end of the day, I don't want to see any of our town employees, A, get harassed for doing his job, or B, getting put in harm's way. That's what I'm saying, if we had an officer up there, people can act differently. Two weeks ago, our guys got threatened.
Because of the, the upcoming discussion on.
Correct.
On the food scraps and all that.
And, and, and I don't, I don't take that lightly.
But also to try to enforce, sometimes if somebody gives them a hard time, they say, go ahead, it's not worth it, and, you know.
I guess I would, I would just say, I'd like to see a, a two-phased approach to this. I'm always interested in trying to work with their current job descriptions, rules, et cetera, without spending extra money. If we could start with that and then move to another one, I'd be fine with that.
I don't want to spend any money, because I'm cheap, but.
True, true.
No, but when you're putting people in harm's way.
No, I understand that, Dwayne.
Again, is, is a job, a transfer station worth risking your, you know, life because some people are upset that are coming from Clinton, or Chester, or Killinworth? And, and I, I've been coming here for years, that's all I'm just trying to say.
Understanding that and respectfully, I don't think it's an either-or. And I would highly encourage us to move forward on giving them some stricter guidance on what we want them to do, following that up if necessary with police enforcement. I don't think we can just let this drift.
Oh, no, no, we can't. Correct, I, I agree.
I don't think anyone's saying we're going to let it drift.
No.
We're trying to be realistic of what's up there, and some of the situation our guys are in, and I, I personally think that is a wonderful idea, have a couple weeks, but, you know, we're paying overtime to have the police up there. This is Sunday, what if Saturday?
Again, I'm going to move that we have them in and have a discussion about their jobs and what we expect them to do, and, and then hear from them on what their challenges are on that, but start there before we start billing overtime.
Well, you are welcome to go there on every weekend and talk to them.
I've gone up several times, I really have.
So then you already know some of their problems.
I think, separate than this, I actually think we as a team need to get engaged, have a discussion, get the information, plan a course of action.
Okay. Okay, well, no movement to be made on that, on the motion was, so, let's see. All right, so I lost track after an update on discussion, so six, what's coming, seven?
Speed and safety.
No, that was six, updated.
Discussion of transfer station, now, um.
Yeah.
The only thing left, adjournment. Speed and safety?
We added some things.
Oh, speed and safety, yeah, I apologize.
That's okay. All right, Catherine, take it away. Speed and safety.
The reason I wanted to add this, and, again, we had had our priority session, we're going to have it, we're going to talk, we're going to have that now, speed, but I didn't want to let it drift. During the course of the many months I talked to people, I thought, I started out with the merchants, there was a problem on Main Street, and it's not just Mike. And over the past year, I've heard Mike's letters, I've heard him speak here and all of that. Most respectfully, I'm not diminishing him by saying that I've heard him, I have heard him, and he, we got some recent ones, this, since we've all been in office. However, I found out, I heard it from three specific additional merchants about problems on Main Street, and it's not just in front of the Riverwind Inn. I heard it from people, individual citizens, about problems right here in front of, where are we, Walgreens trying to cross there, problems going on there. I heard about it down at the whistle stop. And then when I went door knocking, I literally heard it almost everywhere I went, and I thought, I was amazed at this. It's on West Elm Street, a lot of problems. It's on Rattling Valley Road, it's on Union Street, it's two different portions of Union Street, Spring Street, Bridge Street, and then even on Election Day, I had a resident come up to me, a Vietnam vet, telling me about issues with rumbling, what are the rumbling strips? The special term, rumbling strips, I guess, and that sort of thing. So, we've got problems with speeding on six different areas that we know of. We've got a significant problem here. I will say that I was disappointed, we were copied on the letter 10 days, two weeks ago, from Mike outlining the issue, readdressing it. I don't believe there was a formal response back at all. Then we heard from Officer Kraus, it was rather dismissive, saying, we're needed elsewhere, not on Main Street, we can't just be on Main Street. The reason I'm bringing this up is that, A, we have a problem on Main Street, at a couple of points on Main Street, and we have a problem on multiple other streets. And I would like us collectively to figure out what it is we need to do. I don't know if we want to have a session where we get input from the citizens on where this is, if we take a look and see, are there measurements we need to take? I believe measurements have been taken with the DOT sign, but there are other areas. There are some, some issues with speeding around the time of the factory changes shift around the time where kids are getting out of school. We have a, a challenge here, that we are bisected by, by two-state roads. And so that requires a lot of engagement with a very slow-moving organization known as the state. But I think the problem's big enough that we need to address it, and that's why I wanted it on the agenda. And thank you for letting me speak to this today. I think it's big enough with enough people having expressed concern about this, that we really need to address it.
Okay. So I'm, since I've been in office, I've reached out to the DOT, I've talked to the state police, I've been talking to our resident state trooper, and there is some movement forward on all of this. So it has not been ignored, but it is a very large issue, and it is around town on multiple roads. So it's going to require being addressed from multiple, you know, facets. So it certainly is an important issue, I'm glad you brought it up, and I think we, maybe another special meeting where we can kind of attack that and how we want to do it, and maybe invite our resident trooper here, maybe get our DOT contact here, and maybe even Norm or somebody, someone of our local elected officials, because it is a, it is a concern, and we are addressing it. And I know the Board of Selectmen prior to our administration have worked on it, DOT came down, did a traffic study, and some of their findings really, the, the traffic wasn't moving as fast as people think, you know, it's a lone car. wasn't moving as fast as people think, you know, it's a lone car or two, that kind of... But they did put in the radar detectors, or the, those signs that, you know, and that does help slow people down when it's flashing at you. But it definitely is something that needs to be addressed, and that crosswalk in front of the Fitness Place is not a correct crosswalk, so we have to work with the DOT to get that corrected or removed, because it's not ADA compliant, you know. So, so it's a great issue that really needs a lot of work.
Just so you know, Catherine, this has been a hot topic for several years. The DOT has been here a few times, they've walked from one end of Main Street to the other end of Main Street. We've had our federal delegation here with Mr. Blumenthal, Senator Blumenthal, and again, this is a, and I'm not brushing it off, this has been a hot topic for everyone. But again, we're dealing with the state, and you just said it, we're dealing with the state. The state moves at a snail's pace, if, at best, half the time they're going backwards versus going forward. But we need to do something, because there's a lot of, we just heard from Renee down on Warsaw Street, where she listed, is a big, everyone is in a rush today. Everyone's in a rush.
So towards that end, and I know we're not gonna solve it here, but I'll just put this out, we were, are going to have a special meeting on this, we'll talk about it. This may be something that we need an actual action, acting group to take hold of, develop a project plan, and have ongoing accountability for. It's a big enough issue. So I look forward to that discussion, I really do.
Great.
Thank you.
Has the town engineer ever weighed in on that conversation?
What was that?
The town engineer, has he ever weighed in?
I can't say yes or no, I, I don't know.
I don't know if the town engineer does anything with state roads.
Yeah, they do. They would lay out the crosswalks and lights and stuff, they do that.
Well, we have some plans for crosswalks, maybe raised, speed tables are being considered, but again, we're waiting for the DOT, because they're running a test, and it's on a town in like East Haven or West Haven or something, so. So, snail's pace, it's going. Okay, what's the last one?
Next one's a resolution for, for the problem.
Okay. So I'm gonna just read this resolution, so it's in the minutes. Our town clerk is going to certify this tomorrow, that it was read into the minutes, and that the Board of Selectmen acted on it. Basically resolved that the town of Deep River may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary to appropriate for a grant of $325,000 for the Deep River replacement of recreational equipment at Deep River Elementary School, Devitt Field, and Flatwood Park. So basically, further resolved that myself, Carol Jones, for Selectmen, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Deep River, so that we can carry out the contract for this playground. So we just need it to be officially entered, so that we can submit all the documents to the state along with this grant that we received for $325,000.
This, this was already passed by us, Selectmen previous administration, but it was never signed off, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, to allow you to sign it.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I just have nothing else. I did wanna say, give a shout-out to the elementary school. Deep River Elementary School kids are gonna be outside next Friday, 9:00 AM, the 22nd, singing holiday carols, I guess I can call them Christmas carol, maybe not, holiday caroling. So if anyone would like to come, it's free, and the kids sound great, and it'll be right out here by the tree. So 9:00 AM. Thank you.
We won't see, we won't see everyone before the holidays, so everyone have a safe and happy holidays, and we'll see you after holidays.
Okay. Second motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.